All right, good evening. I'm going to call to order the city council meeting for the City of Pacifica for August 11th. Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Here.
Councilmember Stone.
Here.
Councilmember DeGree.
Present.
Mayor Protam Irvin.
Present.
Nyheart.
Present. And we're going to have the pledge to the flag led by Mayor Protam.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the ruling of justice.
And closed, oh, city attorney, closed session report.
Action.
Okay, thank you very much. That brings us to the consent calendar, and there is one item six that we need to pull and do after the consent item because we need a staff report on that. So we're going to do that separately. And Councilwoman DeGree, you had a correction?
Correction. Right on page seven or packet page 28. In the fourth sentence, it says they extended it to them. Actually, that's not exactly what was said. Just strike that because it gives the wrong message. Just strike that statement. Thank you.
And on the consent calendar, we have one other item that has a question about a public comment. My city attorney, I can take this now before we do the rest of the consent items?
Yes, if somebody wants to speak on the consent calendar.
On a different item.
For sure.
Okay. So we'll do item number 13 is Teresa Dyer.
Teresa Dyer, 1408 Crispy Drive. Yeah, I have a question on number 13 where it says write off old accounts receivable from 701 to 206 to 630 to 13 for the amount of $45,717.8. It's not very transparent because it doesn't really mention what account it is. So could I have more information on that?
Okay, thank you. I would, we'll come back to it.
Okay.
I would bring it back to council. Anyone else that wants to comment on anything on the consent items? Okay, bring it back to council. And staff, could we talk about that item 13 before we take any action on the consent?
Sure, happy to comment on that. And Stephen Carmichael might also want to come up to the podium. But just as a side note, there is a list attached to the report of all of the items that are being recommended to be written off. It is a standard practice among cities to take this action. We haven't done it since 2006. I am not sure why that's the case, but we're basically taking care of seven years' worth of write-offs. And if you average it out, it's less than, I think, $6,000 a year. There are companies that have gone out of business or other actions where it's just not collectible. And I'll turn it to Stephen and see if he'd like to add anything.
No, you said basically what I was going to say as far as this. It's primarily for, the vast majority of them are from 2006 to 2008. And they occurred, they sort of fell through the cracks, it looks like, when the city installed its current computer system.
Mm-hmm.
When they converted to ones from the old system to the system we have now. And a lot of those things sort of got left out there and nobody did anything. And by the time somebody did do something with them, they were old and out of date. People had moved, businesses had gone out of business, that kind of thing. So.
Okay. So it's very much like taking a write-off of a bad debt?
Yeah, that's what these are, bad debts.
And it comes from 2006, mostly 2006 to 2008?
2008.
And there's a list in the staff report?
There is.
Okay.
Detail list.
I just had a quick question. I was just wondering, what is the typical strategy? For instance, if somebody doesn't pay a bill, are they, is it policy to try to obtain that money after a certain number of notifications?
Yes, we send out three notifications. Usually try to call the individual or business. And then if we get no response from those efforts, then we turn them over to a collection agency.
Okay.
And one of the problems with the ones in question was because nothing was done with them for so long, they were, the collection agency wouldn't take them because they didn't have anything that they could skip trace to find out, to find out where the money was.
And today, now, we feel like we have that in control and that it's, we do.
Right. We're sending accounts on a monthly basis.
Right.
To collections as they happen.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Stone.
I just was looking at the PDF of this real quick. Was there a copy that wasn't on, this is the same copy that we have that's online with the attachment and everything?
It should be. I didn't go online and check because we send this out routinely, but yes.
I was just wondering if maybe there was a problem with people accessing that list or anything. Okay. I'll move approval to consent calendar.
Minus item number six.
Yep, as amended.
And as amended. Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So.
Can we vote?
Please vote. And that passes five to zero. And we're going to take up item six right after here. So staff report.
Thank you very much, Mayor Nyheart, council members, city manager Tenfo, and members of the public. My name is Joshua Cosgrove. I'm the assistant superintendent at the, in the wastewater department. I'm also here with my department director, Dave Grom. And before you is the council agenda report to award construction contract to replace the standby emergency generator at Lindemar Pump Station to ERA Construction. So as you'll see in the report, the generator project involves the installation of a new 1,000-kilowatt generator that has already been purchased. So this is work to install the generator inside the station. And it's a larger generator than the existing one. So there also needs to be some work to the building as well and some electrical work, mechanical work, structural work. The city council approved this project to go to bid May 12, 2014. We received bids August 4, 2014. Six companies obtained plans, but only two submitted bids. And the two that submitted bids were ERA Construction for about $500,000 and Blocca Construction for a little over $700,000. The apparent low bidder was ERA Construction. All the required documentation was submitted by them. And staff reviewed it and determined that their response was satisfactory. The difference between the two bids of a little over $200,000, we felt that ERA, their bid was in line with the engineer's estimate. So we recommend the awarding of the contract to ERA Construction as the lowest bidder. I do want to also point out, the project does require some special inspections for some of the electrical, structural, and mechanical work. So staff recommends retaining the project's design consultant, which is YEI Engineers, to perform that special inspection and construction management. You'll see under the fiscal impact, the total construction cost of a little over $600,000, about $630,000, which will be, which was budgeted in the sewer facility construction fund 34. Now, I do want to also mention that this morning, we received a bid protest from Blocca Construction. And the bid protest involved the fact that that company felt that ERA did not have the required licenses to perform this work. We reviewed that, and they do have a Class A license, Class A general construction license. And per Business and Professions Code, Section 7056, they're qualified to do the work that is required here. So they do have the required licenses. We confirmed that the work that, the licenses that the company was stating they needed to do the work, the, which was HVAC work and installation of some prefabricated parts, doesn't require a special license. Roofing work was also part of what was in the protest, a license for the roofing work. And both a Class A and Class B license is sufficient to do that work as well, which is what ERA has. So with all that, I just want to state again, we reviewed the protests, and staff is recommending that council deny the protests and award the bid to the lowest bidder, ERA. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
And not to question you, but I want to hear from the city attorney about this also.
Yes.
Yes, actually, Mr. Cosgrove said everything perfectly. I would just add one important point, and that is that the RFP did not require anything but a Class A license. So the bid documents themselves only required a Class A license. So clearly, ERA complied with the bid documents as well as complying with the legal requirements as to what licenses they have to have.
Okay.
But, you know, we, the city attorney's office did review this. We also concur with the recommendation of staff that you deny the bid protest and award the bid to ERA.
Okay. Any questions from council? Councilmember O'Neill, question?
I just kind of wanted, for the benefit of the public, as to why we had that generator at $10,000 a month sitting there for so long before we're bidding out this project?
Well, for one, just to state, the standby generator is needed there because if there's ever a loss of power, the pump station cannot work unless we have some sort of standby source of power. So we lost our generator a little bit ago, which is why you see the temporary one there. And we bought a larger size generator to go in there because the existing one, the one that failed on us, was undersized to, whenever we had significant storms with the power outage and we had to run this station essentially at maximum, the old generator always had trouble providing power. So we wanted to purchase a larger sized generator so that we wouldn't have these power deficiencies during power failure events, wet weather events. But because it's a larger generator, it required more work to be done to the building, which took a lot longer than we had anticipated to be able to engineer that. So it's a larger generator, more complex engineering to the structure itself that is required to put it in there. And that's why it has taken, the primary reason why it's taken so long.
Okay, so it took 18 months? Is that how long it took, or?
I'm not exactly sure the exact timeframe, but I believe so. It's about that long. I see my department director wants to say something.
I'd like to interject right here. You know, the generator, it took so long. First of all, we were trying to gear up to replace that generator. It failed on us just kind of out of the blue. And so we didn't have really anything ready yet. We had to take it to engineering firms, electrical, and mechanical, and structural. And they had to work out the issues. Like Josh said, the generator is much bigger. So the pump station where the generator goes is on the second floor. And that floor was not, not strong enough to support the new generator. So that had to be engineered. How to get the generator into the building had to be engineered. None of the openings are big enough to bring in the generator. So we had to come up with a plan to cut a hole in the roof and lower it in with a crane. And then we had to do something with that hole. So that all had to be engineered. Also, the electrical had to be engineered. It had to fit into the electrical system that exists there. And so all these things took time. And we waited for those plans for quite a while. Actually, we just got the plans about two and a half weeks ago. And so we turned it around and put it out here real quick. And so that's basically it.
Okay, thank you.
If I remember correctly, we have experience with this company too. I think I read that in a former report. Is that correct? The company we're voting on tonight.
I'm not, I'm not sure of that, but I can get back to you on that. About ERA you talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought I read that in a previous report. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from council? I have no cards. Anybody in the public want to comment on this? Okay, seeing no one, pleasure the council. Councilmember Stone.
Just wanted to move that we award the construction contract to ERA Construction Incorporated for the Lindemar Generator Replacement Project, approve to retain YEI Engineers Incorporated Services for Construction Management and Inspection, and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents related to the Lindemar Generator Replacement Project.
If we could just insert before that, deny the bid protest of Blocca.
Can you do it all in one?
Yes.
Okay.
Just deny the bid protest of Blocca.
And I say and, deny the bid protest.
Bid protest. Of Blocca.
Okay.
Of, what was, what's the name?
Blocca, it's the other company.
B-L-O-C-K-A.
Of, deny the bid protest of Blocca.
Blocca.
Blocca Construction.
Blocca Construction.
Blocca Construction.
Second.
Second. Councilmember O'Neill, that was a second. Okay, please vote. And that passes five to zero also. We have no special presentations. I assume we're doing anything we're doing during oral communications. We have no public hearings. So that brings us to council communications. Who's going first there? Councilmember DeGree.
I think the whole city knows about our Little League team and how well they did it. They're disappointed, but, for the end, but they, they beat the top seeded team. I think they, they've done a lot to be very proud of, so they've certainly put Pacifica's name out in the media, that's for sure. I hear it on radio and TV. Went to the, VFW and the American Legion had the inauguration of their new officers at NICS, and it was an inspiring event. So tomorrow is the Economic Development Committee at the police station conference room. I believe it starts at 6:00.
Okay. Councilmember O'Neill.
I wanted to say, I wanted to compliment Mayor Nyheart on her meeting on the mental health issues at the community center, I think it was on the 29th. It was well-attended. There must have been 70 people there. And there was a lot of different agencies that were represented. So I just wanted to congratulate her on a job well done. Also wanted to congratulate our city manager on becoming a grandmother this week. And just fair warning to everybody, there's now three grandmothers up here, all with pictures on their cell phones. So I just wanted to warn everybody, okay? And there's Steve back there, too, with pictures of twins, so.
Thank you. Very good. Anyone else? Mayor Protam?
See, I attended the beautification committee, and we talked about the upcoming mayor's beautification recognition awards. And very excited about that. Should be a lot of fun and a nice unifying contest that we're having in Pacifica. So if anybody wants to enter the contest and show your Pacifica pride, we'd love to have you enter. I also want to say congratulations to the Pacifica American Little League team. You know, I know they didn't make it to the All-Stars, but they were the number one team in California. And what did I read? There were something like 2,200 teams in California. So it's something to be so proud of, and it really brought a lot of happiness and spirit to our city. And just so proud of the hard work that all the families and the community, and especially the players, put into these games. So that was really exciting as well. And on Thursday, I'll be participating in the legislative committee, and I'll give you an update on that at the next council meeting.
Okay. And I'm going to guess that at least one person in oral communications is probably going to talk about the wonderful successes of our Little League team. And I want to add my congratulations. I'm very proud. Not yet, not yet, Horace, don't get excited. I have a few other things, your last. I do want to underscore, there are applications out there. We're going to be doing a lot of outreach. Because a couple of things happened during the process of doing projects, and we have expanded projects. In fact, one just got finished here in the neighborhood from people who have volunteered public land to go in, weed, clean up, and do things. And so it's not just Lindemar Boulevard, and the beautification advisory committee is continuing to move forward. But one of the things that they're doing is the Pacifica Pride Awards, which is any improvements to commercial, residential, any kinds of properties in that regard in the, in the community. It's really about Pacifica gets curb appeal. And we're trying to encourage and support that. And so you will see members of the committee, and then there's a subgroup with a number of other volunteers that are involved, that will be talking about that and getting the word out. And you've probably seen some flyers around. The deadline for entries is October 15 at 5:00 PM. There will be some nice notoriety for those events. And certainly, the newspaper's gotten on board. Other people are encouraging this, along with the chamber. So Pacifica gets pride is one of the things that we're trying to focus on. Thank you for the comments about the mental health forum. That really turned out to be one of the things that's just kind of a beginning. I've heard a lot of people, and we've had a nice article in The Examiner about it, but a number of people came forward to talk about other services and how to access those services. And I know Chief Tassa and I are both keeping an eye on how the response is and how we can have that come over the hill. So thank you for those compliments. I do, most importantly, want to underscore that having Pacifica receive adequate share of services in the county across all areas is really what this is about. And it's not about any one thing other than that, and making those available to the citizens in town. I also want to say a big congratulations and a thank you to our police department for the National Night Out. I participated with the chief and a whole bevy of folks, including, I'm going to mess this up, and she's going to hate me for it, McGruff the Crime Dog, and Eddie the Eagle, who were my escorts to a lot of homes in town, as we talked about crime prevention and crime sa, and safety and those sorts of things. And it was a very successful event. And I want to compliment Pete Olinger particularly for his work in helping set that up and the officers that came along. So thank you. And thank you to the neighborhoods that are continually starting their neighborhood watch groups. We have more that are joining, and I appreciate that. I think that that's really one of those things where, in a community like this, it's very important for us. I also wanted to just make one other little comment, that City and County Association of Governments meeting is coming up on Thursday. And, you know, we will start in the fall another cycle of funding and grants and those sorts of things. So it behooves all of us to pay attention to where we are legislatively and what's happening. I told you about what was going on last time with the Association of Bay Area Governments and having something that almost tipped the balance on the conservation areas. So we have to watch at every step, making sure that Pacifica gets their share of the money. So I appreciate all of you that chair or attend as part of a committee, keeping good eyes on all of that. And particularly congestion management will be a big attention in the fall. So, Mike, you've got your work cut out for you there. Okay, anything else from council?
Should I just say?
Yes. Councilmember O'Neill.
I actually read an article in the paper about, you know, I knew Seton Hospital was for sale and everything else, and I saw where Daly City was actually passing a resolution to ask the attorney general to review it. Because I guess some of the five contenders that may be buying it from a nonprofit are profit-making companies. And I was just wondering if the council would want to entertain that we join Daly City in a resolution asking, because they handle something like 20% or 25% of the Medi-Cal patients in the North County, if I remember correctly. And that's why the, in Measure A, they were going to get money to retrofit that hospital was because it was far cheaper to retrofit that one than to build a new county hospital up here. So I just was, I just wanted to see, does that, does the council want to entertain doing a resolution?
We'd have to put it on the agenda for October.
Well, yeah, that's what I want to know.
Or for October, for September 8th. So that seems like a logical thing.
Okay.
Something similar to Daly City, and especially since it's our closest, so.
I mean, I'm sure they serve as specificants, too.
Yep. All right. Thanks for mentioning that. Okay. So with that, we come to oral communications. And I've been trying to resist reading this to you, but my modifications have been misinterpreted, so I am going to have to read it. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that's not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during oral communications, provided, however, that during the oral communications portion of the agenda, only items not on the agenda for that meeting may be addressed. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body. No, and not any member thereof, council members shall not enter into debate with speakers under oral communication. A maximum time of three minutes will be allowed for any speaker pursuant to Pacifica Municipal Code Title II, Chapter 1, Section 2-1.118. Any person making impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks, or who becomes boisterous while addressing the council shall be called to order by the presiding officer, and if such contact continues, may, at the direction of the presiding officer, be ordered barred from further audience before the council during the meeting. This particular paragraph has been in our agenda for years. So I was trying to gently remind people, now I'm going to just have to read it each time, because I just want to remind people that it's there. So with that, we're going to start oral communications. And I have a couple people who haven't been here before. There are lights on the dais, on the podium. The green light means you've got a full three minutes to start. When the yellow comes on, you've got one minute left. Don't think you have to stop then. That's just the caution sign. When the red happens, then you have to close. Okay? So Sean Stack is our first person, and I tend to call them so people can come up. Roger Medlers after that, Teresa Dyer. So Sean Stack?
Huh?
Sean Stack is first.
Who is?
Sean Stack.
Sean Stack?
Yes. Roger, you're after Sean.
That is me.
That's right. Great.
Hello there.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm here talking today about bike riding here in Pacifica. I know we've, we've come here and talked about it before. Me and the bike shop, local bike shop here, Gearhead Bikes, have been trying to organize a bike park for kids to ride safely here in the town. We have been doing fundraising going on since the last time, I believe, the city council has passed the approval of the park. I know it's been a couple of years since that, and some things have happened. I know it takes a lot to make it happen, but I'm just here to let you guys know that we are still involved and we are still putting stuff together. And you can go by the skate park right now and see probably 10 kids on bikes there, riding. I know it's not supposed to be done, and I know the police, Pacifica police have better things to do than show up and kick kids out of the skate park for just trying to be safe and have a good time. But we are trying to organize to find a spot, to have a spot, to be able to ride safely. Bike riding is a big sport nowadays. If, I'm sure everyone has seen the X Games and all that stuff. It's just getting bigger and bigger each year. Bicycle riding is in the Olympics now. And if you've seen that, it's, it's big. And I'm just here to represent the kids and the bike riders of this town. I, myself, have been in Pacifica since 1987. I graduated from Terranova, and I've been riding. been in Pacifica since 1987. I graduated from Terranova, and I've been riding bikes since then. I moved to Los Angeles to pursue a professional bike riding career. I did that for about eight years. I'm back up here now, working at the San Francisco Zoo, and I'm glad to be home. And we're just trying to organize this together with, you know, the local bike shop and the kids. Like I said, we are doing fundraisers, and we are still trying to do stuff. I just, I'm going to be real short and just come and say that, and just let you guys know that we are still trying to do something. And we appreciate all the help that you have done, and all the help from Mike Perez, from PBR and everything. And we appreciate it. And that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean. Roger Medler, followed by Tree Stier, followed by John Keener.
Anyway, I think we're going to have to have a lawyer in order to get up here and speak. My lawyer says you've got a freedom of speech. So, anyway, I was reading a letter from Lori Tenfo, and I'd like to know why the chief of police is riding around with you and investigating businesses such as Seabee Tire Brake. Isn't that for George White? Isn't that for him to do? I don't know. Maybe I don't understand something here. Why is the chief of police at private meetings and at the union hall, or city hall? Anyway, you have a city here that will not answer the questions, and refuse to meet with me, and you are obviously covering up for something. I wonder what that is. After being threatened by Colton Meyerhoff for months, loser, faggot, queer, you know, I'm going to get you someday, holding his hand up in the air as to shoot me, all of a sudden, the alternative was to get the dream team to come up with something else. So, I guess they came up with a restraining order against me. And now, all of a sudden, after all that, Bill Meyerhoff claims that he has always been worried about, for his family and employees, and would cooperate with any criminal prosecution against me. Well, that's awful strange, isn't it? All of a sudden, he's threats me for two months, and now he's scared. And I filed a, he filed a restraining order against me with the help of Karen Irving and Courtney Conlon and others, of course. And I opposed the restraining order with the DA, Stephen Wagstaff, and they sent it to the Pacifica Police Department. It is now up to you to investigate it, and I hope to hear something from you, because I never do. You need to answer my questions. So, let me know if I can be of any help. I believe Travis Meyerhoff is a conflict of interest being on the police department. And two staff reports, meeting after meeting, letter after letter, mediation, two police reports, four public records requests, newspaper articles. 29 years later, Mr. Meyerhoff quoted in court, "I'm in compliance." Oh, really? I'd like to see that. I've asked the city council, he says, he quoted, I've asked, I've got the transcript. "I asked the city and council members, staff, and managers, let me know if there's anything he needs to be, that needs to be done." So, you're not letting him know, because I've got requests, share public records requests from McCarthy that there's no permits that I know of, and I'd like to see them. And he said he's more than happy to comply. Have all of our city business license and financial building approvals? No, I don't believe that. Anyway, numerous permits. No, I'd like to see that. Anyway, I also went to, all right, anyway, also, am I over with? Is that it?
That's it, Roger.
Okay, you usually cut me off. But, oh, I guess I'm not used to this kindness. Thank you.
Tree Stier, followed by John Keener, and then Horace Hinshaw. And that's my last card.
Hi. Teresa Dyer. I want to talk mainly about our budget deficit. And I wonder if you knew about this Government Performance Accountability Act that was passed by the state. And I'll just briefly tell you that it provides a stable and results-oriented budget process that helps local governments reach community goals, encourage partnerships between local leaders and the community in collaboration among regional groups, hold local office officials accountable for the success or failure of public programs, and facilitate greater open and participate government at every level. And then, there's also a B B P. It's the Participating Budget Project. So, those are two things that I wish that some of the community was involved when you were doing the budget, because I know that a lot of records were, were, what do you call it, slashed or whatever, thrown away. And I don't know what kind of records those were, but I have a vast amount of information on past budgets that would have probably been helpful, and I still have them if you'd like to have them. Now, my other question is, in June 25th, 2007, item number 10, Agenda, you passed a resolution, whoever was here, not all of you were here, regarding the City of Pacifica Fixed Asset Policy and Procedure, and I'll just, and capitalization policy, accounting, and financial reporting. I'm just giving you the subtitles here. Inventory Control Policy, Safeguarding, Tagging, Transferring Asset to Another Department, Location and Building, Disposal of Surplus Property, Proceeds from Sales and Auctions, Purchasing Asset Procedures, and so forth. And basically, what it says is, anything up to $5,000 has to be tagged and inventoried with a serial number and so forth. So, I think if each department would been doing that, I don't know, maybe they have, I think we would find some of our lost money. But I'm pretty sure I know where most of the money went, and I'll be given a report later on that. Thank you.
John Keener, followed by Horace Hinshaw.
Hi. John Keener, Lindemar. I just have two questions concerning the widening of Highway One, which I haven't heard asked before. And so, I, I'll ask them. Number one is, the previous city manager committed the city to maintenance of the 16-foot median in Cal Transit Plan. And the question is, how much is that maintenance going to cost? Are there any estimates and so on? And the second question is, the, the funding for the widening of Highway One, the project, is currently estimated at 55 million. And it will come primarily from Measure A funds, paid for by half-cent surcharge on our sales tax. And it will be funded through our capital improvement plan. My question is, who pays if there are cost overruns? The city, county, or someone else? That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Horace, it's your turn.
Hi. Thank you, Horace Hinshaw, Pacifica. You've mentioned the Little League All-Star team. That's a historical moment for this small community. Right now, we're enemy number one in Hawaii. I can guarantee you that right now. There is no doubt about it. And we could have been enemy number one in Nevada if we played, maybe started in second innings to the first inning. But that's baseball, and that's the way it goes. But regardless of what the outcome is, this team made history. It should be recognized by the City of Pacifica as well as all the community people, leaders in this city. It should not be forgotten because this may never, never happen again. As you made mention, out of 2,200 leagues, it's the number one team. It's the first and only great team in California right now. So, we have a lot to be proud of. Now, we're trying to work with the city and the city manager and the chief of police, hopefully that we will be able to do something, to hold a parade for these youngsters. As you well know, Pacifica American is based in the back of the valley. So, we would probably like to start back in the valley and work our way back up to the, the front of the valley to do this. Nothing has been planned yet. We're just in the talking stages. But if everything goes the way we like for it to go, we would be doing this on Saturday, the, back up, Saturday, August the 23rd. So, we'll hear more about that. But with the, the approval of you folks and the city manager and the chief of police and everybody who wants to get on board, this is great. Definitely think that a proclamation is in order for these, these youngsters by, by the city to be recognized at, at an event that's scheduled, or perhaps the next city council meeting. But let's, let's, let's give a big hurrah of these kids, because this is phenomenal that you can be number one in your state and number two out of 10,000 leagues in the fixed western states. That's pretty, that's pretty awesome. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no one else, we'll come back to council meeting. I will say that the Chamber of Commerce is very interested in working on exactly that issue. I don't think Horace is listening to me, so it's okay. Will you share that? All right. So, putting all the resources together because that's exactly what we would like to see happen. Okay, with that, anything else? We have no items for consideration, no public hearings. We have vacations coming up, and we'll see you September 8th. Thank you. Good night.